We'll call this meeting of the Craven County Board of Commissioners regular session for Monday, October 17th, 2022 to order. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Liner?
Here.
Commissioner Mark? Commissioner McCabe?
Here.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Here.
Chairman Jones?
Here. If you will, please let us stand together as our county attorney pleads us in prayer and remains standing, if you will, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Loving God, you are author of life and origin of all created things. We ask that your grace and blessing be bestowed upon the men and women who have been called to serve our county. Help them to represent their constituents wisely with an eye towards safeguarding the deeper truths of human life that come only from you. Bless the county that they represent. Bless our country. Help our commissioners to take actions that will uphold the values of peace and justice in our land and throughout the world. We ask this in God's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We welcome each of you here this morning and to those that may be viewing online, we welcome you also. I would ask for those in attendance to please let's make sure our cell phones are on silence so it wouldn't disturb the meeting. Commissioners, you have before you your agenda packets. Are there any agenda items you desire to pull or add this morning?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any discussion on the motion? Here none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Next item would be the consent agenda. You have the minutes of October 3rd, 2022, regular session, tax releases and refunds, sheriff's office donation rollover budget amendment, and the cooperative extension bank foundation budget amendment. Are there any consent agenda items you desire to pull this morning? Here none? Do I have a motion to approve?
Shall I move?
Second.
I've got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion on the motion? Here none? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Item two this morning, we're honored to have with us Mr. Ron Lewis and Dr. David Streeter, who will make a presentation to us on the charters of freedom, and if they will to come forward at this time, gentlemen, welcome. Glad to have you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Board, County Attorney, County Manager, IT Director, who has given us a lot of special attention and help and citizens. Thank you very much for allowing Ron and I to come and talk to you this morning about the charters of freedom. And as you can see here on the first slide, one of the things I'd like to take just a moment before I turn it over to Ron is settings versus monuments. A number of years ago, when I was at one of my first staff meetings at Foundation Forward, I had just been hired as the Director of Education for the organization. I forget exactly what term was used to, as an adjective for what we do, but also I'd noticed that a lot of people in the communities where we were visiting and elsewhere were referring to the charters of freedom as monuments. And that kind of struck me as strange. And the reason so, a monument is something that pays a tribute or an honor or homage to something or a person who is no longer with us. The charters of freedom, the Declaration of Independence, Constitution, the Bill of Rights, Civil Rights Amendments, they're all very much alive and well. Those are what gives us the liberties and freedoms to do the things that we typically do in our lives, a lot of times without even thinking about it. And as an example, to meet in a forum such as this. In a lot of places, this would never be allowed, and if so, we would probably be incarcerated for doing so. So anyway, we call them settings or permanent displays as opposed to a monument. Next slide, please, sir. Also, Foundation Forward, we are an education-almost organization, and we focus in on American history, civics, and government. And we like to do these through our settings with easy access throughout the communities. Yes, sir. Next slide, please. As you can see from this, our, the main things that we focus on, I've already mentioned a little bit, our settings are the Declaration of Independence, the Constitution, the Bill of Rights, and the Civil Rights Amendments. And anyway, again, I want to recognize that we, above all, are an education organization. One of the things that we like to do is work with the local schools in providing them complimentary education materials that I develop, for the most part, and for them to take students on experiential field trips once the setting is built. We also work with civic and military organizations as well as other types of organizations throughout the community, whatever it may be. We like telling them who we are, what we do, and how we do it. And next, if we could play the short video and then I'll turn it over to Mr. Lewis. Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to tell you about the principles of Foundation Forward. The number one principle of Foundation Forward is education. No matter what you take from this experience, it all goes back to education. Education on American history, to preserve that history surrounding the time of the founding of our country. Education on government, so all will know how government is meant to serve and protect Number two is access. You see, not everyone can get to Washington, to the National Archives. We want to provide access to these founding documents in communities in a proper setting. Number three is community. Having your charters of freedom allows your community a place where they can gather to celebrate, to honor, and to reflect. People ask us, why are we doing this? And we tell them, yes, it's very expensive, but it's more important than money. We believe it gives us a direct link to our founding fathers by helping to preserve what it is they gave this country, a government to serve and protect we the people. If you want a monument or a setting to last, you put more underground than above ground. These are not tip-over monuments. Your foundation goes down three and a half feet. It is solid reinforced poured concrete coming up into a solid reinforced core. Just the core and foundation of the center display weighs over 38,000 pounds, over 19 tons. There are six documents displayed. All are life-size, which means the Declaration of Independence is a little larger than the others. Each one is on quarter-inch etched bronze and weighs over 60 pounds. There is a charters of freedom medallion on the front, which is very special. The eagle represents the Declaration of Independence. Proud, bold, defiant. The seven stars above the eagle represent the seven articles of the United States Constitution. The 10 stars under the eagle represent the first 10 amendments, your Bill of Rights. From the beginning, this has been an education project. We learned we had two founding fathers who were very big on education, Thomas Jefferson and Benjamin Franklin. These two believed that in order to have a free and independent country, you must understand how government works, that you cannot control what you do not understand. Thomas Jefferson in 1789 said, "Educate and inform the whole mass of the people. They are the only sure reliance for the preservation of our liberty." And James Madison wrote in 1822, "A people who mean to be their own governors must arm themselves with the power knowledge gives." Our hope is that our future leaders will come from communities where they have their own charters of freedom set. That your children will no longer grow up just talking about the Constitution and Bill of Rights of Washington. They'll be talking about their United States Constitution and their Bill of Rights, the ones they grew up right in your own community. My question is, are you ready to be a part of history? Because we're going to dedicate your charters of freedom. It's going to be here for the next 300 to 500 years, and your future generations are going to know you were here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
Can we go back to the PowerPoint? Thank you for having us in what could be the most beautiful county in North Carolina. And it's certainly rich in your heritage, even back to the colonial days. I don't know why it's taken us 10 years to get to Craven County, but here we are, and we want to talk to you and let you understand what we're about and offer you the charters of freedom as a gift to Craven County. Who has been to the National Archives Building? When I ask that question, normally about 10% of the people raise their hand. That's why we do what we do, is to make the documents of our founding fathers more what they stood for, what they believed in, what they represented, available to the public. Next slide. The front door of the National Archives Building is now closed. We were there about six weeks ago, and you have to go in a side entrance and gerrymander around until you get there. The reason they closed the front doors is because the documents have deteriorated, and it is believed that the atmosphere from the outside has contributed to the deterioration. So there's two times a year that the National Archives' front door is opened. It's the Fourth of July, and there are big gala that they have once a year that represents the documents and showcases them. Next slide. As I said earlier, the documents have deteriorated, partly due to the paper that they were written on, the writing instruments of the day in which they used, and just the age of the documents. As hard as our country has worked to try to preserve them, they're very hard to read. The worst is the newest of the documents, the Bill of Rights is barely legible. You can hardly read what it says. Next slide. Our short video. Commissioner Smith, I need your help this morning. If I get too long, will you give me the cut-off? My wife normally does that.
I won't do that. I'll be cutting you off.
Okay. If I get too long, just give me the cut-off sign. Thomas Jefferson and Benjamin Franklin were the founders of the education system that we know today. Next slide. You can see by a quick glance of that, that's basically the education system that we use today. It's very, very similar to what they put on paper, is what we do today, with the primary education, the secondary education, and the third level being advanced. Next slide. That's where this all started. That's the courthouse lawn in Burke County, North Carolina. Vance and Mary Jo Patterson had visited the National Archives and were so moved that they wanted to bring that back to the schoolchildren and the citizens of Burke County on the National Day of Prayer in 2012. That's where it all began. Next slide. We're an educational nonprofit. We realized pretty soon that we had to be a nonprofit because we were going to be spending a large amount of money, and there had to be a way to deal with that. So we started a nonprofit. Next slide. The scope of the project was to design and build replicas of the charters of freedom as they appear in the National Archives Building and display it in a central location with walk traffic and accessibility. We have built 42 of these across the country. We've built 25 in North Carolina. Our goal over the next three years is to finish all 100 counties in North Carolina. We would be the first state in the country that had the founding documents in all 100 counties. Next slide. That shows from the National Archives Building how the documents are located. Interestingly enough, you can't take a tape measure in there, you can't take a camera in there. So basically, our dimensions are real close. They might not be exact, but they're based on four paces of a short guy and markings on the clothing of his wife. So we were in the National Archives about six weeks ago. It took us 10 years to get there. We had a wonderful sit-down discussion. At the end of our meeting, they asked us if we would be willing to do their extension education program across the country. So I say to you, for a little North Carolina nonprofit, it took 10 years for the National Archives to recognize what we do, and we're very, very proud of that. Next slide. As the video said, we go down three and a half feet, we pour 19 tons of concrete in the ground. Next slide. The side displays are 4x4, and the middle display is 4x12. Next slide. We put reinforced molded concrete trays, and we put the documents in those trays. Next slide. The documents weigh 60 pounds. I know that because I carried them all over western North Carolina, and they do weigh 60 pounds apiece. Next slide. That's what the first one looked like when we finished in Burke County. The Declaration of Independence on the left, the four pages of the Constitution in the middle, and the Bill of Rights is on the side. Next slide. We had several artists to help us design an emblem. As Vance Patterson said on the video, the eagle represents the Declaration of Independence, strong, bold, defiant. The stars above are the articles of the Constitution, and the stars below are the first proposed Bill of Rights. Next slide. We put a time capsule in the back of the center setting, which is the Constitution, and we would like letters from you and from others and some memorabilia of what life was like in 2022 in Craven County. We normally do the closing of the vault about six months after the dedication so that we have time to gather all the material. We're scheduled to be open nationwide on September the 17th, 2087. That's the 300th anniversary of the Constitution. Now, Commissioner Mitchell, if you're here for that...
I certainly appreciate your optimism.
If you're here, will you please tell the group that we left the combination with Chairman Jones?
He's younger. He might be here.
Pardon me for my humor. Next slide. There's a story here, but I'll not go into that, other than to say that you couldn't see the flagpoles in the first picture, and you see them in the second picture. And we removed the mayor's old ugly tree there. I'll not go any deeper into that. That's Burnsville, North Carolina, a very pretty setting. Next slide. Asheville was our third setting. Next. That's the first example of limestone. That is in Kokomo, Indiana. We have learned that limestone is beautiful, but it's not a good material because it attracts moisture.
So.
And it takes it about 20 years to cure, and by that time, moisture has become a real problem. So we don't do limestone anymore. We use a lot of brick in North Carolina because of the colonial aspects of the brick. And occasionally, we will do granite, but it's much more expensive to do the granite. Next slide. Noblesville, Indiana, beautiful brick setting. Next slide. You know, when we build the charters of freedom here, I just know that it will be used widely, and it's there for all kinds of services and dedications and ceremonies. When I first met the Master Sergeant here, he showed me very vividly, and I find out from veterans across the country, that veterans greatly appreciate what we do with the charters of freedom. You know, each veteran took an oath to protect and defend that Constitution, and there's no expiration of that oath. It's for your life and that. So veterans are very important to us, and our biggest supporters are veterans across the country. Next slide. We put that slide here for a purpose. This is Jacksonville, Illinois. The rain was coming down in sheets, and we had 200 people under those tents wanting to see the dedication of the charters of freedom in Jacksonville, Illinois. Next slide. That's what it's all about, folks. The teacher out front with her class, teaching them about the founding fathers and about the charters of freedom that creates this great country. Next slide. That is yours truly, is Benjamin Franklin on the left. Do we have any educators on the board? Thank you, Commissioner, for what you do. I hope that the good Lord allows me to live long enough to see our public schoolchildren gravitate to the charters of freedom as much as the homeschoolers do. This is a group of homeschoolers in Franklin, North Carolina. And they, we have a lot of fun with the homeschoolers. Next slide. There are 3,143 counties, boroughs, parishes, and special districts across the country. Our goal over the next decade or more, if the Lord blesses us, is to build as many across the country as we can. We're in 11 states, but primarily, North Carolina is our home, and that's why our goal is to build all 100 counties in North Carolina. Next slide. It's all about education, access, and community. Next slide. I want to make one thing really clear, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. We build and gift to the county the setting, which are the three documents and the pedestals that they're on. All the run-up or accessories to that site would be a local responsibility. Now, looking at your proposed site here between the two buildings would be very little cost to the county because the site is in a great condition as it is, and would take very little investment on the county's part to build the charters of freedom there. Next slide. Next slide. Okay. I want to tell you a quick story, and I'll be out of here. Okay? Okay. I was making a presentation in Union County, North Carolina. I had been the county manager there for six years in an earlier life, and I knew a lot of the people. And after my presentation, one of the council members said to me, said, "Mr. Lewis, you did a great presentation, but you haven't done anything for me. We're left out. I'm left out." So I went back to our staff, and we sat down around our conference table, and I said, "We got a problem because there is a group of our population that feels like we haven't addressed them, that we need to complete the circle and explain how all this came about." In the original Constitution, when they were discussing the Constitution, they based their initial discussions on what's known as the Virginia Papers. The Virginia Papers were written by Thomas Jefferson and James Madison. The original papers abolished slavery, but when they got to the convention, they quickly saw that they didn't have the votes to pass it. And as Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, you never want to go into a meeting without knowing if you got the votes, right?
Correct.
The 38 years that I was a county manager, I knew how every vote was going to be before it was taken, as a good manager does. So we put our heads together, and we developed a fourth pedestal. The fourth pedestal contains the 13th, 14th, 15th, 19th, and 24th Amendments, which makes all of us the same, and it completes the circle. Now, Thomas Jefferson and James Madison and others, it's amazing at how many of these people were young people. They were in their twenties. And the oldest guy was old Ben. He was the sage. If they got stuck and didn't know an answer, they'd go to Ben, and Ben could come up with the answer most of the time. But they were smart enough, and some of us believe that, even though we're apolitical, I believe that God's hand was on those men as they wrote the Declaration of Independence and the Constitution, because they were mortal men, just like you and I. But they were smart enough to put into the Constitution verbiage to allow it to be amended. Six months later, I went back to Monroe and made a presentation, and the young council member who had given me such a challenge, when I gifted to the city of Monroe the fifth pedestal framed edition of the Bill of Rights, of the Amendments, the Civil Rights Amendments, the young man had tears coming down his cheek. So we're very proud that now, if you choose, we can add a fourth pedestal in Craven County. It completes the loop, makes all of us the same, and defines that we are all Americans and we're all citizens of the United States of America. I'm going to stop right here. Commissioner, is that okay? And ask if you have any questions?
I was reading my hand. I was reading my hand for the...
Commissioner Liner, if we'll start with you, since you got any comments, questions?
No, I appreciate you being here. We had a conversation up in Charlotte when we were up there and everything else myself, and Denny met with them and everything else, thought it was the right thing to do to bring you down here, to have the whole board hear the presentation and go through it, and I think you've done good. I appreciate it. I mean, a little bit long-winded, but I don't expect less from a lieutenant than a ring corps, so I let it go at that. I appreciate everything you've done, both of you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other, vice chair?
My only comment would be, again, thank you for coming. The thing that struck me as, I can't wait to see it myself. I have been there, and I have many, many, many years ago. So I saw the originals, but I don't remember much about that. My only comment would be, I have grandchildren, I have great-grandchildren who are now in school, and I would dearly love to see every teacher in Craven County do a field trip and bring the kids to see this, and I'm sure the homeschoolers would appreciate it greatly. So that's my, I have a friend in the audience here who I think could influence that, so...
We had the superintendent of schools with us today.
Oh, did you?
You come on a great day.
I made a challenge to him, didn't I?
First lady.
That the public schools have the same passion...
Yes.
...as the homeschoolers do.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions?
No, I'm done.
Okay. Just Jack, if you will, and gentlemen, whoever wants to kind of jump in here. The process... The process from here, where do we go?
So I think there was a slide on that, Mr. Ron. Maybe the third or the last slide had kind of your procedural. I don't know, Steve, if you can pull that back up or not, sir.
Your IT guy is on the job.
Steve's doing, doing good. So I think the fundamental step, Dr. Streeter and Mr. Lewis here, would be whether or not you want to move forward with this project. If you do, we've identified, Zach, please speak up here. Gene, Zach and Gene have already toured the grounds with them. They have a great location just outside of this building. A lot of the times, I think, when you put these up, you have to put sidewalks in to get to them. We actually already kind of had a place in mind when we met with you in Charlotte and I think you guys liked it, too. So really, at this point, there would be some approvals, if you do accept the project, some approvals. Obviously, because of our location with the city of New Bern Historic Preservation Group, we'll need to get those. Zach's got some ideas, I'm sure, on landscape and the lighting and things like that, but I really don't think there's a whole lot there because we've got a good location, Ron. Let you speak to that, sir.
It's, it's perfect. I can't have any other words to describe. It's, it's an ideal location between two wonderful buildings. All the activity of the county is right here. It's, it's a wonderful location.
We do, Mr. Chairman, Board, also have our Purple Heart Monument there. We put up about eight years ago. It's kind of a, it kind of meets that criteria for what you guys are looking for.
All right. Commissioners, do you want to officially vote today to accept this gift or you want to let us defer to our next meeting for discussion then?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept this gift and add the fourth pedestal as well.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. You've heard the motion. Is any further discussion? Gentlemen, you got anything?
We look forward to working with you. I had hoped to build Craven, Jones, and Omslo at the same time because it saves us a lot of money. If we can do that, it would be a real boost to us.
We'll work with you. We just want you to know, I think what I'm getting ready to hear from this board is, I think we appreciate and we want to accept this gift, but you do it at your time.
Thank you very much. One more question. We probably won't, we will not finish before Commissioner George goes off. Can we bring him back for this, for the dedication? We have to.
You don't have to, Danny. I'll stay away.
He's always welcome. He's always. Any further discussion from the board?
No.
Here none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate you coming today.
Mr. Chairman, can I just, for the board, so if there are any calls, what I'll ask Zach and Gene to do is to go ahead and prepare those at the time these gentlemen are ready to go. We'll bring that before the board.
We will prepare what's called a letter of intent. In local government terms, it's a memorandum of understanding, and we will be sending that to you for formal acceptance. Okay?
Sounds good. Thank you, gentlemen.
I'd just like to say thank you for recognizing the superintendent of the schools.
Yep.
As the Director of Education for Foundation Forward, one of my duties is to make connection with the superintendent and other school systems that may be in the region. And I usually ask for someone to help me make that connection, but you did that for me early in the process and it's made my life much easier. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Item three on the agenda today is the Tryon Palace Inclusion Public Art Initiative Presentation. We have with us several, I think, representatives of Tryon Palace, but Ms. Sharon Bryant, we welcome you this morning.
Hello.
Good morning. Thank you for having me and thank you, Commissioner McCabe, for inviting me to this meeting this morning. Ms. Mann, thank you for accepting our proposal to do this project. I bring you greetings this morning to talk about a grant that we received from Z. Smith Reynolds, a $5,000 planning grant. This planning grant is to talk about a public art piece that we're planning to have at Tryon Palace. So this morning, we want to talk about it and we want to also offer anyone that would like to be a part of this grant to please write us a letter of intent. By the time I go through this PowerPoint, you'll see why. What is the goal of the inclusion art project? The initiative is intended to use permanent public art to share stories of diversity, equality, and inclusion. This effort means to stimulate communities' conversation to resort in sharing and fuller understanding our community history. It encourages community to engage across sessions of people, groups of organization, and to find ways to tell their story to express in art. It will commemorate, memorize stories that tell diversity and more complete narrative of who we are, especially as people of color. Community engagement is vital to success to this project. Next slide, please. What is the story we want to share and why? Examine the unique period of New Bern history, 1770 to 1835, as told in the book Craft and Life, African-American artisan in New Bern, North Carolina, 1770 to 1900. If you have not seen this book, this is what this book is about. Introduce the stories of artisans and craftsmen of color, such as Amelia Green, Asia Spellman, Donna Montfort, James York Green. Explore how these stories of diversity and strength make our community strong and more resilient. Next slide, please. How are we getting input? Sharing the scope of the project, multiple organizations and individuals, videotaping individual and organization, share through these thoughts, sign sheets, and meetings to keep you in touch, update on this project. And on October the 12th of 2022, we just had our forum meeting to tell our community and other organizations why this, why this project is so important to us. Next slide, please. How can you partner with us? Participate in community meeting and forum. Give us feedback and ideas. Share the project with your friends, family. Help us connect with others. Provide us with letter of support. We can complete this decided project. That's where you come in, please. What type of public art speaks to you? This is just some example of what this art would look like. You see the brick wall where the people are coming out of. That's what we want to tell out of this book right here, The Artisans of New Bern, stories that has not been told. Next slide, please. Artwork site at Tryon Palace, where would this artwork piece be? Hoping that this will be right in the front of Tryon Palace, North Carolina History Building. View from the front street and the parking lot entrance. View from the front street side where you can see where our sign that says Tryon Palace. View from the front street near the railroad track before you go across the track. Next slide, please. The timeline, outreach stories for elderly started in August. Outreach community input, we come to you, such as I am coming to you this morning. August, September, October, and November. Community input form that we just had at Tryon Palace updating our community where we are now. Letters of support are collected ongoing through December. Drafting application for November and December. I found it edited as early in January. Submission for this application is January 31st of 2023. We will see the award announcement on May 2023. And if we receive that award letter, that means that we will get a grant for $300,000 in order for us to do this public art piece. If we get the award, tons of more work to is done, project completed November of 2024. And that's why I'm standing here today, to invite you to join us in sharing with us this public art piece. That is my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions, Commissioner?
Any questions from the board? Ms. Bryant, thank you so much. Appreciate y'all coming and making this today to us. Thank you. All right. Item four we have, Commissioners, is the Public School Building Repair and Renovation Fund Project. We do have with us Mr. Stacy Lee and our Superintendent, Dr. Wendy Miller. Good morning to both of you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Jones, Commissioners. We're here this morning to seek approval for our plan to spend repair and renovation capital dollars to be allocated by North Carolina Department of Instruction. This is an equal allocation that every district in North Carolina gets to help with repair and renovations of their facilities. It's $800,000. We've been told by North Carolina Department of Instruction this is ongoing, but it's at the, at the approval of the General Assembly each year. So we're hoping that $800,000 we have for this year is a definite. We've already got approval for that. A little bit about the process. What we, what we've done is submitted an overall plan where we think these buckets of money will be spent. So you'll see an item in there, painting, which is an allowable expense through this fund. What we'll do on a monthly basis is identify the specific projects that come out of that painting bucket. And then that will go, that will have to have Chairman Jones and Chairman Boomer signature on each individual project, but you're approving the total amount of painting. So as an example, if we choose to paint H.J. McDonald inside and out, then that amount of money would decrease from the amount of money in the painting line. And that will be a specific project that we submit on a monthly basis. So we're asking for approval of the overall plan and then, on a monthly basis, we'll be submitting those individual projects for Chairman Jones and Chairman Boomer to put their signatures on for proof. And any questions?
Questions from the board. Commissioner Liner?
Greg. Greg, this, this is actually a two-year funding, right? $300,000 for the year past, $500,000 for last year?
That's correct.
And then continuing five. And I think, I think we check it in there. It's $500,000 for the next four years because in the budget was a five-year program.
Right.
So it'd be 500. Okay. I just want to make sure the board, this is not, we didn't get $800,000 for one year. This is a two-year establishment because it took the legislators so many years, so long to get the first year. Nobody knew what they were going to do with it. All right. Go ahead.
Make a motion for approval.
Okay, we have a motion. And I have a second. That is to authorize the chairman to sign the funding applications to prove the associated budget amendment in the amount of $800,000. Any further discussion on the motion? Here none. Madam Clerk, please call the robe.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Thank you.
Superintendent Dr. Miller, good morning and welcome. Glad to have you today. We want to give you the opportunity, anything you want to share with us. Not trying to put you on the spot, but you're always welcome at our meetings.
And I'm happy to be here and look forward to continued support of our boards working together. We've had some great meetings with, with your chair and Chair of the Board of Education for our future plans. And I know you're hearing things about school closings and we had a great plan that we sat down and discussed and it was a competitive grant that would have done a lot of those things. And unfortunately, the grant went to one of our neighboring counties and, you know, Pamlico County got that. But we will continue to push and seek funding to improve several of our buildings so we can close some of our older buildings. So you have my commitment to do that. We will continue to work to ways to do that so that we're not putting the burden on the county.
Thank you. Any questions for the superintendent? Well, again, thank you for both for what you do and appreciate your cooperation.
We appreciate your support. Thank you so much.
Have a good day.
Thank you.
All right. Item five is the Craven Agent Planning Board. We got Mr. Clayton Gaskins this morning. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. How are you all doing?
Well.
So I'm here for a budget amendment with the Agent Planning Board. So back in June, when we presented the budget for this current fiscal year, CARTS was part of that, public transportation. And Kelly has informed us that she did not need those funds, which was close to $16,000. So basically, the bottom line number has not changed. We're just moving the money from CARTS to, I think it was $15,644. We've split it. 40% is going to go to Havelock Senior Center and 60% will go to George Street Senior Center here in New Bern, with the goal of those, both of those agencies using it toward operations as we did this last year.
Okay. Commissioner Liner, you serve on that board. You got anything other?
Yes, sir. The board just remembers that last year, or when we came in with the budget, we knew we had to come in with the previous year's budget and this amount was in that budget with the CARES Act money and the other money that Kelly has received. She's made it official now that she didn't need that money. So she brought it before us and we elected. No other department was ready to take it and needed it at the time. So the committee decided to go 60-40 split to the operational for the two senior centers. And we think it's a good way to move it forward. AAA was in support of it as well.
Okay. Any questions before we entertain a motion? All right. Here none.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment in the amount of $34,688. And you see the split there. Any further discussion on the motion? Here none. Madam Clerk, please call the robe.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. All right. Mr. Gaskins, while you're standing right there, we'll move on. Did you want to add something, George?
No.
Okay. Let's move on to Departmental Matters, number six. And we have the first matter, it would be the hospice billing rates. Do you want to cover that or do you want John?
John? John? He was trying to get me to do his part.
Okay, I hear you. Go right ahead, bud.
Is this the sheet that you all have in front of you?
Yes.
Okay. So each year CMS does an increase with our billable rates. So we're basically asking the county for approval, the Board of Commissioners for approval for these increases. So the, that particular page shows our current rate in the middle column. It shows to the right-hand side what the CMS reimbursement will be. In the front sheet, we're just rounding up on each one of these. So the routine home care, which is the daily rate we get, will go from 205 to 212 per day. The continuous home care will go from 61 to 64. Inpatient respite care will go from 475 to 49, I'm sorry, yeah, 475 to 493. And the general inpatient care will go from 1,070 to 1,112.
Okay. What's the desire of the board?
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second to approve the new billing rates for hospice. Any further discussion? Here none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you. All right. Mr. John, you want to cover the next item? Good morning to you, sir. And this is for environmental health, new fee request.
That is correct, sir. So we're just seeking approval for a new fee is a tattoo artist temporary permit. Our other fee is an annual permit. It's $200 for a year. The new fee would be $100 for no more than seven days. And the purpose behind the fee is that there are events and traveling tattoo artists that do come, that do come around. There's an event coming up in December that's fundraiser and it's, it's not only for fundraisers, but give them opportunity to get a seven-day permit at a reduced rate, hoping that by giving this option that they do acquire the proper permits before they, before they do these things.
Okay. What's the desire of the board?
Make a motion to approve with a question.
Okay, we got a motion. I have a second. Second. Okay. Commissioner Liner for discussion.
Now, once you get, once they get this, do you all still go out and inspect?
We will, we will go to the permitting process. We will go to the location and meet the artists there and inspect the location before they would issue the temporary permit.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question also. Is the, the permit a one-time thing? Once you get a permit, can you tattoo for ever? Or is it a year? You have to have a permit?
So our annual, our existing fee is annual. Our existing fee. This fee would just be good for no more than seven days.
I got you. Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. You have here the, the new fee request. It's also sort of a new procedure to some extent. I mean, would you implement in this one-time temporary payment, so?
There, there is a precedent. Omslo County has the same $100 fee. So I think it's a, I don't think it's a new thing, but it's, it's becoming more common.
Okay.
When a person wants to get a tattoo permit, do they have to show you qualification? Do they have to prove qualifications to you in some way?
What we got to look at is that they have
That the condition is
They have the proper equipment and that they have knowledge They have the proper equipment, and that they have knowledge about illnesses that can be transferred, tattoo procedures, and things like that.
All right, no other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Commissioners, before we get into item seven, do y'all want to take about a ten-minute recess?
Yes.
And we'll come back. I think number seven's going to take us a few minutes, so let's take about a ten- Commissioners, we'll come back to order. The next item we have before us this morning is item seven. We have the tax reevaluation two thousand twenty-two. I'm going to ask if, before we hand it over to Ms. Young, I want to hand it over to the county manager and kind of let him introduce us today, and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, I appreciate the opportunity. It's always fun when you do something every six years. You get to have kind of a new process every time. So this is our revaluation process. And let me just give you kind of a little background, then I'm going to turn to Leslie and Glenn, who are the experts here. So after the last revale in 2016, we were to go to a four-year schedule, right? Four years is a schedule in which you will see very little variance, because you're doing, basically finishing one revale and starting another one, Glenn. You can go up to eight years, which is what the county used to do prior to 2010. In that instance, you see a longer period where you can have more variance in values over time, good and bad. So we were on this four-year schedule, and two things happened. One was Hurricane Florence. Hurricane Florence happened, as many of you know, lots of property in Craven County was damaged, and it was an inappropriate time, based on the tax administrator, Ronnie Antry, and Glenn, and my analysis, and we brought that before the board, so we delayed it. Then, the second thing that happened was COVID, and that pushed us another year. So here we are, and Glenn and Leslie have done a great job preparing the schedule values, I'm going to let them present it to you. We do have also a unique opportunity over the next couple of weeks where Leslie and Glenn and the tax team, along with some county staff, will be out in the various communities holding community meetings. First one tonight in courtroom four, across the street at the courthouse, and tomorrow night at the City of Havelock. And we've got a schedule on our website, and I'm sure Leslie will talk about that some. But we look forward to hearing the presentation, Leslie and Glenn, and look forward to meeting with you in the community, so.
All right, Mr. Leslie?
We're yours.
It's not in the main building. It's in the main building. Footroom four, it's not in the main, it's in the main building.
Not in it. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Jones. Good morning, Vice Chairman Booker, and Craven County Commissioners. As always, thank you for having me this morning. Come to you this morning in compliance with North Carolina General Statute one zero five dash three seventeen. And the title of this subject is Schedules of Values, Standards, and Rules. Before I delve into the statute, I want to first piggyback on what Jack had to say about giving you a little background, and then I'm going to talk a little bit about what exactly is the schedules, and why they're important. And then, thirdly, what is the purpose of my being here this morning? Before I get started into the background, I want to go a little bit, one step further, and give you some background. You see that, again, we have dealt with a 2016, we were to have a 2020, 24, and 28. And then Jack has just explained the reasons why we're a little off schedule, which is fine. But I want to bring your attention to, that I want to commend the Commissioners in 16 for implementing a four-year cycle rather than eight, and here's why. You see, in ranking of the one hundred North Carolina counties-
Leslie, stay to the mic.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I get busy, sorry. And staying with the one hundred counties of North Carolina, if we rank by parcel count in North Carolina, largest to smallest in parcel count in size, of course, Wake and Mecklenburg are going to be our larger counties. However, I want you to understand that Craven County is ranked twenty-ninth. We are just shy of sixty thousand parcels. So to recognize that we are nearly in the top quarter of our state, it's imperative to have a four-year cycle for a revaluation, and not to wait any further than that. And the reason I say that is because we are mandated by the state to appraise at a fair market value. And to understand real estate, we know that values are always changing independently, they change at different rates. Even in our own county, we have different spots of our county that are going to change at different rates. So to capture a fair market value, and to keep equitability among our county, it's very important to keep a four-year cycle, so thank you for that. Before we get started on the book itself, and no, we are not going to read all four hundred and eighty-two pages, but I do need to bring to your attention as well, that I want you to understand in this revaluation, we have something very special. This is my third county in which I've served in my career. This will be my fourth revaluation cycle in my career. And I need to let you know that it is an absolute treasure, and in fact, very unique, to have someone like Glenn Jones on our team. Glenn has served in thirty-one years. This is his fifth countywide revaluation for Craven County. And I have very much enjoyed working alongside him, because he brings to the table of knowing all the ins and outs of the county. He knows his data backwards and forwards. My uniqueness that I bring to the table is I have a diverse background. So Glenn and I have been in various conversations, some a little spirited more than others, but we have addressed a lot of the inefficiencies that may, that we have come up with our experience. So with Glenn and myself, and one of the things that I really appreciate about Glenn is he's not just the numbers guy. He doesn't just put this book together. Glenn invests a lot in our appraisers on the staff. He takes a lot of time, a lot of dedication, in preparing the appraisers for this revaluation. So if I had to describe this revaluation in one word, I would say it's solid. With my unique background, with Glenn's foundation, I think we are very, very well-prepared for this revaluation. I want to talk a little bit, again, and Jack covered a lot of it there with the history, and then moving forward in what exactly is the Schedule of Values? It's a very simple answer, with a lot of complexity behind it. But the simple answer is, it's basically a manual, a handbook, and some may, more accurate word, be a toolkit, for the appraisers to appraise the properties in Craven County with equitability. Now, I find that to be very important, because as your assessor, I am charged by the state to appraise all property with fairness and equitability, and that's what this book ensures us. It creates consistency among all classes in our real estate parcels. When I talk about complexity, I'm going to give you just a brief snapshot of what I mean. Since January one of this year through August thirty-first, I ran a report that shows the number of sales transactions in our county. Now, not just any and all sales, these are sales that we consider to be good, fair market value, arms-length transaction sales. In other words, we can use these sales in helping us determine value for its neighboring properties. That number is just over twenty-six hundred sales in eight months in this year. All of last year, we had just over forty-three hundred, and the year before that is approximately thirty-five hundred. So you can see, we are very close for Glenn and his group to be analyzing, staying on top of these sales, applying these sales throughout the county of nearly ten thousand. It's a very, very complex work behind this book, okay? Now, the second part I want to address is, why is it important? Why do we even have this book? And it's, for one, that I addressed earlier, I am charged to assess with equitability, and that's what this book does. It keeps the consistency throughout the county. And, thirdly, one of the things it does is it eliminates bias. It eliminates any, what could appear to be favoritism. So, thirdly, and what we get to the meaning of today, is the statute itself. And this will come from General Statute one oh five dash three seventeen, letter C. And if you will, I have provided an insert on the left side of your notebook, okay? I have a very talented new staff member, her name is Nikki Gardner, and she's fantastic with graphics, so she, I very much thank her for assisting me with this. This is really what you want to keep in mind, okay? This is what the statute three seventeen, letter C, is all about right here, and it's the timeline, and I'm going to go over this in just a second. To accompany the calendar, I've also included the North Carolina General Statute itself, okay? It's a two-page, and the second page I have highlighted in yellow for you, that you're going to see. I won't read it to you, we'll leave that jargon to folks like Eric Grady. But I'm going to show you a calendar that will show that we're in compliance with the statute, okay? You have the last two, and these are the actual newspaper ads that will be on the New Bern Sun Journal newspaper, beginning, one will be beginning tomorrow, and the other one will be advertised four times. But I want you to have this as a reference, so that you'll know if you're asked any questions by the citizens, okay? My eyes on here. Today is, it's just a great, great day in our real estate appraisal division. For most folks here in the room, it may appear that this revaluation that today is something maybe of a kickoff, a beginning. It's a far cry from that for us in our division. In fact, today for us is actually, we're starting to see the light at the end of the tunnel, okay? All of the hard work that has gone in is now ready to be shown and recognized. So today, October seventeenth, I'm here this morning to present the Schedule of Values, Standards, and Rules. Commissioner Jones, at the end of my presentation, we will need to seek and have approval for a public hearing that will be scheduled for November seventh. All right, according to statute, I am to advertise tomorrow, which is the first one here, announcing the public hearing, and this ad will be in the New Bern Sun Journal. Steve, I think I'm about ready for the website. In this ad, it is to announce that we have the Schedule of Values on display in the Tax Department. We're required by statute to do that, and that will be this book, and it's ready, okay? Now, a couple of other things is, Steve's bringing up the website, I have employed my website as my additional staff member. Our office hours are Monday through Friday, eight to five, but I have created our website and bring it to the point that it can serve our citizens twenty-four-seven. So if at any time you have any question, if you can't put your hands on this book, we've made a subcategory here. If you follow along to the front, revaluation twenty-three is the fourth category down. I have all of my subcategories there. Now, those will be a continual update pretty much from now until about May, okay? So what you see now is not the final product. Where we are tonight, or today in our revaluation cycle, if you will look to the fourth subcategory down, and it's titled Schedules of Values, Standards, and Rules, which is today, and if you click on that, Steve, we can show the Commissioners right now, it is announced that those will be released today. And I have coordinated with IT that after my presentation, that this book will be available online, okay? All right, the next part on our calendar is, again, I mentioned, the next time I will be here will be the public hearing on November seventh, and that is by statute that we are to allow the citizens to have a time to bring forth any discrepancies or any comments that they want to make regarding the schedules. Once I have presented that, or we've had that for the seventh, we will then, on the twenty-first, November twenty-first, that is when we will adopt these schedules, okay? Now, by statute, it says that once we adopt, I am to advertise four times in the New Bern Sun Journal, which I've posted here on November twenty-second, twenty-ninth, December sixth, and December eleventh. If you'll notice in the second ad, the notice of order adopting. It's very similar to when an appellant comes in and wants to appeal the value of their property. We have our local Board of E and R, and this is what we are considered when it comes to the schedules. However, they can take one more step. Statute allows them to go before the Property Tax Commission if they have any concerns or discrepancies with these schedules. And by statute, I have scheduled that last day to appeal to the Property Tax Commission to be December twenty-second, okay? At this time, I'll be glad to take any questions, but I do have one closing comment to make before I leave the podium. And Chairman Jones, we need to offer the approval to present, to have a public hearing on November seventh.
Okay. Let's do that first, if you will, let's get the public hearing, and then we'll entertain questions, if you will. Do I have a motion that we set a public hearing?
Second.
All right, the public hearing will be set for November seventh, six p.m. in this building. I have a motion and a second, any further discussion on the motion? Here none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed, all right, we have that set. All right, now, questions for Ms. Young?
I think I know the answer to this, but I want to make sure I have it right. When we go to look at these properties, we're going to look at every property. We don't go in the homes, in the businesses. We strictly go to the property and evaluate it from the external part of the property. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, other questions? Leslie, I want to just say first, thank you on behalf of the board for you and your team, your willingness to have these town meetings that you're going to have across Craven County, which begin tonight. I do encourage any citizen that is watching us, or media outlet, to please make sure they go on the Craven County website and help us to publicize this. It's very important that our citizens, if they can, to participate in these meetings and hear it firsthand. I know you're probably going to say this during these meetings, but having been on the board, I think this may be my third time of revale. In years past, and I'm pretty sure you followed the same procedure, but I think you're, in years past, you've looked at communities, you've taken values within certain sections, and that's how you appraise those areas. And I'm just throwing out, because Glenn, you know, you were raised on my end of the county, you know, you've got Dover, Dover-Fort Bommel Road, then you move over to Winter Green Road, and then you move over to Asbury Road. Are we doing that same thing in this schedule? We are. So, in saying that, let's go with Dover, with the Fort Bommel Road, and then you go all the way to Adams Creek Road. The percentage in change of these values for Dover-Fort Bommel Road may be significantly different than that of Adams Creek Road.
That's correct.
Correct. And it's based on sales of that area over the course of, how long are you looking at that?
Well, we're looking back as far as, if we don't have any good sales, we go back in time, but right now, as Leslie stated, properties are selling just like Adams Creek Road market. So we have a lot of good sales. Twenty-twenty is our year to take sales out of them. So we have to go back. If we use twenty-twenty-one, it kind of skews our statistics a little bit, so we're sticking with twenty-twenty-two right now, and continuing to monitor as we go forward.
Okay. Commissioner Smith?
Considering what you just said, if we are looking at a place like Dover-Fort Bommel comparing to the Havelock area, I would think in Dover-Fort Bommel, you would have very few sales. You might not have a sale in ten years, fifteen years out there. So at that time, the property sold would be considerably a small amount of money, smaller amount. Are you making adjustments for that, for the time of the sale, for example?
Yes.
You know, considering that something that sold in two thousand and twenty would sell for considerably less than it would, you know, twenty twenty-four?
Correct. If we can't get our, if we can't get sales in the timeframe that we're looking for sales to do a lot of time adjustments, you're correct. But right now, there are a lot of sales out there, there really are, so we're not having to.
I'll just give it as an example.
Mr. Chairman, may I just, Commissioner Smith, in your book, you go to the tab Data, Needs, and Collection, from twenty-twenty to, I believe, almost the present.
It tells you that.
There's a schedule by township of sales that Glenn has collected with staff. So while there are fewer sales in District or Township one and two, there are sales there, per month, usually a couple. Yeah, I don't necessarily have a road name on some of those, Glenn, but I think you're looking, and a lot of what you do is by neighborhood, like properties within a geographic region. So there's not one inside the town of Dover, but there's one on Sand Hill Road, just right outside. That might still be in the neighborhood, but he gives us some data.
Got you.
Got you. Commissioner McCabe, you had a question?
Yes, in the hollow area down by the water there, a lot of people lost a lot of land. What kind of adjustment do they have on that one, for us tax-wise?
I say again.
Through the storms in the hollow area by the water, they lost a lot of land.
Hey, Glenn, if you want to, come on up to the mic, if you don't mind. Just make sure everybody hears you. You're being put in the spotlight here.
How would a homeowner adjust that tax rate?
Well, it's, it's done, I, I believe in North Carolina, it's a mean high-water mark. So if they lost land and they got their property surveyed, I think that's the key word there, getting their property surveyed and bringing a survey into the county, because we have calculated, and Lou Valente, head of our GIS Mapping Department, would be better versed in answering this. But if you have an acre, and let's say the storm came around and washed out half an acre, obviously, if you contacted our office, we'd make an adjustment for that. That's not a problem. But as far as on the map, I don't know how that's handled, to be honest with you. But we've had numerous people call. We've gone down and looked at these properties and adjusted them for repair, if you will. And so, we look at each property at that case as an individual basis.
Because I know down in, or Shetter View Beach, it lost a lot of profit from the storm.
But you know, it's interesting, and I'll comment on this. We really haven't seen, although all properties have increased in value, we hadn't seen a great increase in, in waterfront land, if you will. In some areas, it has now, but in, in, in most, it has not. But it's interesting that, you know, we got hit with Florence, we all lived through that, and right now, you wouldn't tell it in the marketplace, to be honest with you.
Thank you. It was the chairman. Glenn, did you have, yes, go ahead.
I, I want to ask for amplification to make sure I understood what you were saying. If a property owner on the water, for example, got, lost a huge amount of property as a result of hurricane or storm damage, it is incumbent on the property owner to go down to the tax office and say, hey, we lost, you know, a third of our property because it got washed down the news.
Yes, ma'am.
But it's the property owner's responsibility to do that.
Yes, ma'am. And, and once we're contacted, we go into action.
Okay.
Meaning that we, you know, we're going to make the necessary adjustments if adjustments are necessary.
Correct.
That's good. Thank you.
I want to ask you a question that's, that's not completely attached to that. If a property owner loses a half an acre to a storm, is there any way that the, the property owner get any adjustment for that? I mean, any insurance? Are there any, any way, if you just lost that, that property?
We, we adjust.
I know you adjust the tax over your pay list.
Right.
But there's no compensation for that loss, is that right?
No.
I know that's not part of his job, but one, it's just a curiosity.
I don't know how insurance relates to that. I, I will tell you, in a lot of the cases, particularly on the Neuse River, there was shoreline stabilization where the Corps of Engineers and FEMA, along with the county, came in and put some of it back, right? Some of the areas where Commissioner McCabe's talking about, and other areas on the Trent, I, I don't know the answer to that. I would assume that, you know, once you reduce the taxes, there's an insurance reduction. I'm, I'm assuming because you got less property, right? So, I mean, to me, that, that's a complicated one. Yeah.
All right, I've got a, a list, but I'm not, I want to hit on two real quick, and we'll, if nothing else, we'll move on. Commissioner Marks' district and my district is comprised of a lot of agricultural land.
Right.
I, I just pulled up the, looking here, the used value schedule. Now, are you using this used value schedule? Are you using any numbers from the state of North Carolina? All of them are coming from the state?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So these are not our numbers, they're numbers that you're getting from them?
Right. Present use value is, they give us a manual, and we take those numbers straight out of that manual.
Do you remember? If you don't, it's fine. I mean, what are you seeing here? I can't remember what it was compared to now, percentage-wise, you think is of an increase?
Well, I, I don't know a percentage, but the top number, I think, was 1080.
Okay.
And now, what is it, 1115? Yeah, or it's not 1085 or something like that. So it's, it's still, you know, use value for anybody in there, or, or for anybody that qualifies, it's a, it's a good program.
I suppose, I suppose a new trend we have now in North Carolina, and seen in Craven County also, is folks buying a farm, well, buying 10 acres of land.
Right.
Nine acres, whatever, and putting a horse farm on it, equestrian. So with that, that's under a different heading.
Yeah, it is, but not much has changed there since last time.
All right. All right. The last thing that I, I want to ask you. So you've told us the process. We thank you for the, the calendar you've given us. Your folks are going to begin assessing and trying to send out these notices. When is the date that folks will receive through mail what their new value is?
I have, I have that scheduled for the notices to be mailed out the week of February 27.
February 27?
Yes, sir.
And you feel like you've got adequate staff to do what you've got to do between now and the end to be able to accomplish that? You, you, you're in good shape?
Yes, sir.
Well, we're doing, we like getting those fourth quarter numbers in, because everybody right now, I don't know if, if you've bought or sold property, but it's up. I mean, we're looking at, we have, in, in my tenure here, we have seen, you know, I've seen properties go, go up in value, if you will. But this is a cost-type deal. This is all generated a lot of, not much land. We're not seeing, in, as Mr. Jones stated, you know, in the rural areas, we're not seeing that big increase in land. What is happening out there is, just as you noted, smaller tracts are selling. But the cost of homes, the entry level for new construction, I think, is north of 200,000. So rising tide floats all boats. And you can see that in, in the cost of almost every property out there. I've just seen some that have blown my mind. But yet, we're also, I have a good staff. We're conservative. We look at the numbers. We have outliers. You have some people that there's really no reasoning for them to jump so high, if you will. But those sales, we look at really tough. And, you know, we're going to have outliers on both ends of the spectrum, and we try to hit it in the middle and, and do it equitably.
Vice Chair.
County Manager, it would probably be important, I'm sure this will come out tonight, but to people watching now, understand that if their property goes up in value, if everybody's property goes up in value, we don't reap, let's say every, our, let's say the properties go up 20%, we don't reap 20% more taxes. You want to, you want to address that and how that's going to work?
Right. So I like to think sometimes Glenn and Leslie have the hard job, which is doing their revaluation. But I think an equally hard part is, once they set those values, and I get a valuation number from Leslie, I base next year's budget in the revenue that the county will receive on that. So what the goal is, is revenue neutral, right? We get the same amount of money next year with the new values that we got this year with our current values, okay? And that's the board's decision. So I'll prepare, if I get guidance from the board, to prepare a revenue-neutral budget, and we'll do that. If, you know, there's some other thing, we'll have to talk about it. But we typically, in this county, go to revenue neutral.
And that means that some people will probably pay a more tax, and some people will probably pay less tax.
It's going to be.
When properties go up a greater amount or a smaller amount.
That's correct.
So, but the bottom line is, we're not going to do this so that we can reap a whole bunch, a whole bunch more. A lot of people are worried about that. They're thinking, oh, my goodness, my house was worth 200,000, now it's worth 300,000. I'm going to have a, a 35% tax increase. That's not necessarily.
No, sir. Our, our goal in this is not to make more money. Our goal is to, to value the properties equitably. That's the whole point of the project.
I just wanted to make that point.
Glenn and, Glenn and his staff, yep.
There are folks that are nervous when they hear tax revaluation.
That's right.
Okay, any other questions, comments from the board? If not, we thank you both. Yes, ma'am.
All right, I need to conclude with two comments, and then be finished. Because I have you in front of me right now, I just want to give you a heads up. You'll be getting much more information as we get closer. On April 3rd, all of you, our Board of E and R, appraisal staff, administration, I have coordinated with Department of Revenue, Real Estate Director Doug Huffman. He will be coming in to review a 52-page manual on all about appeals. That is the date that we convene, and I thought that would be beneficial since it's been seven years since we had a revow. We want to get started off on the right foot. Lastly, I want to say one thing, and I'll keep it short. The last time I was before you was the commissioner meeting on Monday, August 1st, and I provided a, a settlement for the year. There was one portion of the settlement that, that I failed to comment on. I think it's noteworthy to bring to your attention, and it really is a compliment to one of the divisions, our Tax Collection Division. I want to comment on our tax collection rate, what it's been over these last three years, because I think it speaks well to the hard work of what our, our Tax Collection Division has done. We finished, and I reported in tax year 21, we finished with a rate of 98.82. It's a very good tax collection rate. The year before was a little bit more. We finished at 99.12. The year before that was 98.70. Now, I'm excited about our 98.82 for this past year, because it was more than what it was in 19. What I don't want to misrepresent is, we have to take into account a lot of the economic factors that were going on in 2020. We had quite a, a global impact. The citizens were very responsible. Our Tax Collection Division was very good in collecting. We actually collected more revenue this past year, although our tax collection rate was down. But I do need to give attention and compliment to our Tax Collection Division. Those ladies work very hard. Cindy Glover, Cindy Johnson, Alicia Jeffrey, Linda Evans, and we have a new hire, Tim Wagner. I hear them outside my office daily, and, and they, they don't, they don't quit. They don't stop. But they do a fantastic job. So I just wanted to recognize that. Commissioners, it's been my pleasure this morning. I'm very excited about tonight, and, and of course, as always, if you have any questions whatsoever, or if I can assist you in helping with the citizens, please don't hesitate to contact.
Thank you. We appreciate it. All right, Commissioners, item 8 we have before us this morning is North Carolina Governor's Highway Safety Program. We have with us Sheriff Chip Hughes. Good morning, sir.
Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. I have, real quick, I've got one, this is a grant that we put in for to help with compensatory time that our deputies earn when they're out performing traffic-related duties, maybe traffic control at a ballgame, helping work collisions, going after driving while impaired, stuff like that. So as the comp time builds up, as, as often it does, this is going to help offset some of the compensatory time that my deputies receive. It's in the, it's in the amount of $25,000 from the Governor's Highway Safety.
All right, what's desired of the board?
Motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment in the amount of $25,000. Commissioner Smith?
Whenever we have grants, I am a little uncomfortable in, not that, and I'm sure you deserve it. I'm not saying that. But what makes me uncomfortable is, grants are not always recurring. And when we, when we set a precedent, a pay is an expectation for continuous. I'm, I'm, I probably should have had this conversation before now, but I didn't pick it up on that.
Okay, great question. So Commissioner Smith, what this one does is, because we already have a comp time payout policy in place that the board approved, this is going to try to help offset some of the cost as it's incurred.
Okay.
So, no, ma'am, it is not a reoccurring thing. It's something that we certainly will apply for every year, and there are certain milestones that we meet. But this is to help offset some of the expense of having deputies out there on the road when they're working.
I understand what it's for, and I agree that it's, it's needed, but I just have that concern that, you know, when it's not there.
Yes, ma'am.
You have to adjust for that.
Any other questions, discussion?
No.
Here none? Madam Clerk, please call.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Sheriff, you have anything else to share with us this morning?
Real quickly, just let everybody know that we are having more of a increased presence at our high school ballgames now. I think that's where society has taken us, and it's important that we have a number of deputies attending these games from start to finish. It's a chance for our deputies, one, to work closely with the children that are at the game, but for the parents to know, and the folks that enjoy watching our high school football, that they can come there, and it's going to be a safe atmosphere, that they don't have to worry or be in fear of people coming there to do harm. So there will be more deputies presence. You know, we've had them at the New Bern, Havelock, and West Craven games, and we're going to continue to do that.
Okay. Any questions for Sheriff this morning?
Thank you, sir. Appreciate what you do. Thank you.
Item 9 is Emergency Services. We have with us this morning Mr. Ira Woodford.
Morning, sir.
Good morning. It, before, is a request for a budget amendment for a grant from the North Carolina Emergency Management. American Rescue Act is in the amount of $15,319. The grant has to be used to enhance our emergency management program, and we would like to purchase a FLIR Raymarine thermal camera and cold-weather Mustang survival suits to use during water search and rescue missions. This equipment would enhance our search and rescue capabilities for nighttime operations.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Woodford?
Motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment in the amount of $15,319. Any discussion on the motion? Here none? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you, Ira. Appreciate you, buddy. Thank you for being here. Item 10 is Departmental Matters for Water. Mr. Dale Booth is with us this morning. First item would be a budget amendment for the increased cost of water treatment chemicals.
So, I'm sure, as everybody's aware, cost increases on everything that we deal with today. Treatment chemicals are no exception to that rule. Sodium hydroxide, which is caustic soda, we use that for pH control. Sodium hydrochloride, which is bleached for disinfection of water, and calcite, which is a water conditioner. Those are all chemicals that have seen dramatic price increases in the last 12 to 18 months. These are prices that we were not prepared for during the budget preparation time this year. In addition to those price increases, the Craven County Water System population has increased to 36,380 individuals. That's prompted a public water supply to require 10 additional monthly biological samples to be taken by the water system. That began September 1st, 2022. So we asked the board to approve a budget amendment in the amount of $60,000 to help cover the cost, increased cost of chemicals for treatment and sampling.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is any discussion on the motion to approve the budget amendment in the amount of $60,000? Here none? All, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Dale, before we get into item B, Commissioners, item B concerns a meter changeout, and there's going to be, need to be some discussion on it and a vote by the Board of Commissioners today. There is a, a potential conflict of interest that I have with this. I'll let the county manager and the attorney discuss it at the appropriate time. But I'm going to ask this morning for the board to, if you would, to vote, to allow me to recuse myself of any debate or voting on this matter. When you do that, if you approve it, I will leave the room, and I will turn the podium over to the vice chair. Because I have a motion.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second to allow Jason Jones to recuse himself of any debate and voting on the matter of the meter changeout. Is any discussion on the motion? Madam Clerk, I want to ask you to call for a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Mr. County Manager, we will, as Mr. Jones is leaving the room, would you please give us an update on what we're voting on here, or what we're potentially voting on?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Dale. Appreciate you being here this morning. So, back during the budget process, we discussed with you, we were going through our capital improvement plan for the next five years, a new project which would change out all the current county water meters to what we call a remotely read meter. There's two different ways. You can read a meter. One is through antennas, where you read it almost instant- One is through antennas where you read it almost instantaneously, and the other is through a drive-by system where you actually have to physically drive by the meter. What both of these methodologies allow is for us not to be on foot on each individual property, pulling a meter lid. There's a lot of safety things. Dale's going to talk to you about that. But we're here today, this is a five-year project, because it is a large one. I believe at the end, Dale, it's going to be somewhere between seven and eight million dollars to fully outfit the entire county. Just like we have with other projects, we're going to split it up in five or six increments so we can make it affordable, and also, Dale, make sure we can keep up with the amount of money that we're spending, meters, make sure everything's right and get there. So four's yours, sir.
Yes, sir. So Craven County's got about 15,000 or more meters, and it's spread out over, what, 700 square miles. Reading each meter manually puts a strain on staff, especially in times of adverse weather conditions. It can kind of throw off our schedule a little bit. There's also significant safety concerns in high-traffic areas, and one in particular will be the Highway 70 corridor, that James City area, especially now with the construction going on and the highway improvement projects that are being done. There was careful consideration placed several years ago as to what type of system the county would like to move to. The county's several AMI, which is Advanced Metering Infrastructure. So what Advanced Metering Infrastructure is, is you'll place antennas on current infrastructure we have, water towers in our case, and then you place a transmitter on each individual meter, and so that antenna, at whatever increment of time, will wake those meters up. We call it waking them up. So it'll send a call signal out. Those meters will then send all their data up, and it'll be stored in the cloud and then transmitted through a proprietary frequency to the billing, so to either our system or the billing system. It really benefits us in an area like this with large geographical regions. So we have, you know, James City, which is dense, heavily populated. You've got subdivisions like Brys' Creek, which are heavily populated, but then you've got areas like Cove City, Dover, and even down to Adams Creek in East Craven, which are not quite as populated. So it's a good mix. It takes care of both of these types of areas. So there's several different makers of AMI infrastructure, metering infrastructure. The one that works best for us, we looked at, is Sensus. Sensus infrastructure gives us the best coverage area. That's the main thing we focused on, was we were trying to figure out, you don't want to go put 45 antennas up all across the county. You want to get as much coverage as you can with as few antennas, and Sensus advertises, and we have seen and looking at neighboring counties, that they get as much as 10 to 15 miles of coverage through one antenna, which will allow us to cover the entire county with using, I think, eight or nine antennas, I believe is what we're looking at doing over the course of this project. What I ask for you all today is to vote on sole sourcing Sensus through Ferguson Enterprises. Ferguson is the only company in North Carolina that is licensed to provide Sensus products in North Carolina. So I come to you guys asking for board approval for sole sourcing of Sensus products through Ferguson Enterprises.
Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a question.
Yeah.
We'll get the question. Motion?
So moved.
Second. Okay, question.
The question is, if you change here, with a water per gallon, when that's $15, would that go up correctly?
Not at this time, no, sir. This is, there is, this is no, no, this is just for reading meters and getting that information from that.
Commissioner McCabe, let me try to, Dale, if you don't mind, let me tell you that. So this project is not going to cause a water rate increase, if that was your question?
Yes.
There are other factors, as you just dealt with before, that could cause a water rate increase, chemical costs, operation costs, power costs, things like that, but this project itself does not cause that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
I have one, Dale, and that is, when you mentioned cloud, and I understand that, I understand how it works, but I know what.
You're not, I'm a water man, not an IT man.
No, I'm not going to get into how it works. My question is, if it doesn't work because of a malfunction, we still have the ability to go out and read these meters manually? It might, we may not be.
So we have AMI, which is using antennas. We also currently, in our possession, we have the ability to do what's called drive-by, which is AMR. Automatic meter reading is, reading is what that stands for. So we have the ability to, once you put these transmitters in the ground, you can read them multiple ways. So you can either, you can still go and pull up and read the old-fashioned way, you can still go by, we'll have a vehicle, and in that vehicle, you'll have a sensor and a laptop. And basically, what you do is you roll into a neighborhood, and at a certain radius, it'll wake up all those meters and download it onto the laptop computer, which you then take and upload into the billing software, and then we can also use the AMI. So there's several fail safes if the AMI fails to, for whatever reason, upload that data. We can go.
Okay, I wanted to make sure everybody understood that.
Mr. Chairman, may I add one comment? We, and I don't know if Dale mentioned this, if he did, I'm sorry for being repetitive. We actually already have Sensus meters, which is for new construction or thing, meters we've had to change out over about the last five or six years. So on those meters, we simply just have to add the transmitter.
Add the transmitter.
Right, so some meters will just require one, some will require the full service.
That's right. This won't be a, when you look at 15,000 meters, we probably have between 600 and 700 meters. Everything's been put in the last three or four years as a Sensus meter. And so when you pull that box open, there's already pigtail wires in there, and all you got to do is by the transmitter, drill a hole in the cap, put the transmitter in, plug it in, and you go on, you don't have to replace that entire meter.
Okay.
That sort of leads perfectly into my question, are there two, actually? Understand, new construction over the last few years has all had Sensus meters in it?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, older homes, have those been retrofitted?
So whenever we have a meter failure, whenever there's a meter replacement in the last three or four years, everything we've replaced, we've put new Sensus meters in.
Okay, so they're still going to, so if that's correct, then there's still going to be a lot of meters that have to be visually read, correct?
Well, once we, so this change, it's a, forgive me, I moved on a little too fast. This is a, will be a five-phase project. So the first phase will be, what we're, first phase will be the James City area. The routes, I believe, one, two, and three in James City. Anyway, do you have that map?
Well, hang on. You're getting more in the details than I want to get. Okay, at the end of this project?
Yes, ma'am.
Will there still be meters in the county that have to be manually visually read?
When this is all completed, they will be done either through AMI, which is the antennas, or it'll be done drive-by.
Commissioner Mitchell, so first phase is about 2,400 meters.
Right.
And for the remaining four years after this, and we'll put in about that, somewhere between 24 and 3,500 meters a year. So we'll actually change out every meter by the end of the project.
Okay.
Everybody will have this taken.
That was my question, okay. The second one was, if we already have some that are drive-by with it, and I think you've already answered that, what is the benefit to going to an AMI? And I think the benefit is that everything is retrofitted.
Correct.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, got it.
Mr. Chair, I have one question. If you have five or six meters together, so you won't have no problem in reading each one of them individually?
No, we, no, that's, in areas, so you're asking about, like, the manual read?
Yes.
There's no, there's no problem, and the areas, we can knock out a lot of meters in heavily congested areas. The problem there is a lot of times those areas tend to be high-traffic, like the James City area.
Okay.
But there's no problem with that. The problem, the problem when it comes to manually reading and time is when you deal with an area like Northwest Craven, you know, out in the Dover-Cove City area, where it might be two and a half miles between a meter.
Commissioner McCabe, each meter will have a unique identifier, so when we put this system in, we call for that data. We will know, if there's five meters right in line and they're touching, we'll know each individual meter separate because of that identifier.
Good, thank you.
That's what you're asking, yes, sir. Every meter will have its own specific identifier.
Okay, thank you very much.
Nobody, nobody will get somebody else's bill. It'll all be.
That's what, that's what happened.
Commissioner McCabe to get my bill.
I bet, just in time.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. We don't need a roll call on this, correct?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, ayes have it, we're all set.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Since we have a person absent, I'd like to have a roll call to make sure that all of us here.
A roll call.
What's that? Commissioner Smith?
I'm suggesting that we have a roll call, since we have special absence with the chairman to go out, so that we'll know that everyone here.
Okay. Ms. Chairman, that's your call.
Okay, we can do that.
Okay. Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes. Thank you, Dale.
Thank you, twice.
Good job. Get out of here.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Commissioners, item 11 is appointments. We have pending, current, and upcoming appointments. Under pending, you have several there. We have any nominations for any of those? All right, here none, we will move to current. First one is the City of New Bern Board of Adjustment. You have in your agenda packets the ETJ appointments that are eligible. I ask for Commissioners, please take note of that. How much time do we have on that, Clerk? Do you know?
I'd say less than 60 days.
So we need to take it up at our next meeting? Okay, all right. Next, you have the voluntary agriculture district for District 1. You have Ricky Harrison. He does not wish to be reappointed, okay? So we will defer that, if it's all right, till Commissioner Mark gets back. Next would be the Local Emergency Planning Committee. You have a resignation there, and then you have an applicant of Mr. Daniel Hill, who retired from the City of New Bern, who feels, seeks to fill this seat. Do you have any nominations?
I nominate Mr. Hill.
Okay, we have a nomination of Mr. Hill, or the additional nominations from the floor. Here none, we would accept Mr. Hill by acclamation. Next would be the Community Child Protection Team. You have a resignation there. You also have an applicant before you there. This is a new GAL appointee who seeks to fill, Ms. Alicia Roddyberg. Do you have, are there any nominations?
This person's from the same organization she just replaced, okay. Make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion for the applicant you have on file here, or the additional nominations. Here none, we would accept by acclamation. All right, Commissioners, you have there your upcoming terms expiring. Please take note of them and be ready to act on them. Are there any other appointments to be considered today? Here none, we will move next to County Attorney's Report, Mr. Grady. Good morning, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good morning. I have several items for the board's consideration today. The first is an initial offer to purchase real estate that the county and the City of New Bern acquired through the tax foreclosure process. The City of New Bern has already given initial approval to this particular offer, and if the board approves it this morning, we'll put it out for the upset bid process, and it'll be back before the city and the county for final approval. This is a property located at 2706 McKinley Avenue with a parcel ID number of 8-037-061-C. The offer amount is $2,500. The tax value is $4,500, and the cost of foreclosure and the taxes originally due were $3,219.12. I suggest the board consider approving this initial offer today.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution, authorize the upset bid process with the partial on item A. Any discussion on the motion? Here none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed, all right, B.
B is a technical item, but it's also a little out of the, out of left field, if you will. It's dealing with the appointments to the Craven County Board of Adjustment. As the board may recall, we have a Board of Adjustment that hears appeals and special use permits, dealing with the airport zoning and the cherry point zoning. I have to tell you that this board has not met in many, many, many years, is in 15-plus, but we have a need for the Board of Adjustment to meet toward the end of this month to consider a special use permit for a property that is near the airport over in James City. In reviewing the board and the procedures, we realized that there was actually an inconsistency between the county ordinance and the bylaws for the Board of Adjustment insofar as the designation of members. The ordinance says that we have five members with two alternates who would serve in the event one of the regular members was unable to attend a meeting. The bylaws, which are also fairly old, I guess I will say, call for seven regular members. So through research, many thanks to Nan and the planning department staff, we realized that we actually have seven regular members that have been appointed when two of them should be alternates. So the action before the board today is to redesignate two of the Board of Adjustment appointments to alternate members, and we have, through that research, determined that the seat held by Mr. McCabe and the other one by, I think, Mr.
Whitford.
Whitford should be the ones that's designated as alternates. I will say that these members, even though they're alternates, they're expected to attend the meetings, they'll go through the training, they have to be prepared to step in in the event of a conflict of interest or an absence. So I go back to my original statement that it's really a technicality item of the nature of a cleanup, but I would ask the board that the board redesignate the seats held by Mr. McCabe and Mr. Whitford as alternate members to the Craven County Board of Adjustment.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? You've heard the request for the redesignation of stated individuals. Here no further discussion on the motion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. All right, C.
Yes, sir. This is a proposal for the purchase of real estate located out by the airport in James City. As the board is aware, over the years, the Airport Authority and the county have made a concerted effort to purchase properties around the airport, basically to get them for future use or to secure them from development that may encroach into the purposes of the airport, and this is one such property. Many of you will probably recognize it, if you're going down Airport Road and take a left on Old Airport Road, going toward Animal Services, this is the property on the corner. It's been a variety of things over the years. It was a playground, construction place, it was an ice cream parlor, it was a plumbing company. But basically, if the county acquires this property, we'll own everything on that corner going back toward the airport. The way this works is the county will purchase the property, will pay for it, and then the Airport Authority will apply for an FAA grant essentially to get reimbursement, and that'll flow back to the county. So before the board for approval today is the purchase of the property. We do have a contract in place that has been assigned to the board, and if you approve it today, we'll close on it later this week.
All right.
May I make a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? You did hear the board action, that is, to authorize necessary individuals to sign the documents. Here no further discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Mr. Chairman, the final item involves a requested transfer of ten parcels of real estate to the City of New Bern, which in turn will transfer these parcels to the Redevelopment estate to the City of New Bern, which in turn will transfer these parcels to the Redevelopment Commission of the City of New Bern to be redeveloped in accordance with the city's redevelopment plan. The board has agreed to these types of transfers occasionally over the years. For instance, a few years ago, we transferred several lots to the City of New Bern, which in turn transferred the properties to Habitat for Humanity to, you know, be used for building homes with that organization's purpose. We have before you a resolution and a transfer agreement. The way this will work, once we transfer to the City of New Bern, the City of New Bern will in turn have a contract with the Redevelopment Commission for the properties to be used under the redevelopment plan. If the properties are not so used, the city will get the properties back, and then the transfer agreement says, we will get our interest back from the city. I think we can all agree, we never want that to happen, but it, it is in there since we do own our interest. I will note, in your agenda packet, we've got properties listed as item F and item I, 821 West Street and 209, I'm sorry, that's the new one. Those were listed as 712 First Avenue and 914 Eubank Street. The Redevelopment Commission met late last week after our agenda deadline and actually has adjusted its request to substitute 821 West Street for 712 First Avenue, and to substitute 209 Bryan Street for 914 Eubank Street. And I understand that there was some discussion with the Redevelopment Commission that those two properties would be more easily redeveloped than the other two that were requested. So before the board today, for your consideration, would be basically to approve the transfer agreement and the authorizing resolution, the substitution of the two properties I just mentioned.
All right, what's desire the board?
I'm moved.
I have a motion and a second.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion?
What's, what's the length of period as far as rerouting back? How long do they have? I mean, they going to carry this out 10 years? What, sir?
That, that has not been established yet because the agreement between the Redevelopment Commission and the City of New Bern has not been finalized. I do know with Habitat for Humanity, one time period was 24 months, another time period was 18 months, so we are talking in terms of years, but not a decade or anything like that.
Thank you.
Additional questions? All right, you heard the motion and second to approve the proposed resolution, authorizing necessary individuals to sign and execute the documents to finalize the arrangement. Here, no further discussion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Thank you, that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Next, we have the County Manager's Report, Mr. Vay.
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, thank you for the opportunity this morning. Just a couple of recaps here. Today, following this meeting, in about 30 minutes, we have the ribbon cutting for our new 340B pharmacy over at the Health Department. So look forward to the board attending and seeing the new facility. You know, I was over last week, I think with Commissioner Liner and some team with the VA project, and it really looked good. It really does. I think you're going to be happy with the final result there. Last week was a very busy week. We had the Attorney General in, do a roundtable about the opioid settlement with the national lawsuit the county's a part of. Everybody, most people in this room, other than me, attended that. Unfortunately, I couldn't be there, but I understand it went well, and I want to thank Amber particularly for really stepping up and doing a great job. Lauren and Jasmine downstairs helping Amber with that. I thought it was really well done, and I was able to listen in on the phone that day. Last week, Commissioner Liner and I hosted a team from the VA in Durham. He may want to talk about it, so I won't steal his thunder, but I think we had a very productive meeting, had some senior leadership out of the VA system from Durham coming down, and I believe we're impressed with what the county's already doing related to public health and see some real synergy with what the VA's trying to do locally. So I'll leave that for him. And then on Friday, Mr. Jean and I did a tour of a couple sites under construction. I can tell you, I saw girders and steel and wood out of the, the new carts building. It looked great, the site's prepared, and I think that thing's going to go vertical this week. And the fuel station looks like it's just right on the cusp of getting our fuel tanks. So hopefully, Mr. Jean will have time this winter to grow his hair back, get these projects done, and, and do all the good things he's been fretting about over the last summer months. So with that said, oh, and lastly, and I know I mentioned it earlier, but I want to be very specific on these. We do have our revaluation meetings. We got three this week. I want to make sure for the record, we get these stated. Tonight, October 17th, Monday, 6:00 PM, Craven County Courthouse across the street, courtroom four, 302 Broad Street, New Bern, North Carolina. Tuesday, October 18th, 2022, 6:00 PM, City Havelock, City Hall, 1 Governmental Avenue, Havelock, North Carolina. And then on Thursday, October 20th, at 6:00 PM, we'll be out at the Cove City Volunteer Fire Department, 425 South Main Street in Cove City. So look forward to seeing the commissioners at those events and hope the public come out and take advantage of those.
Any questions for the County Manager this morning?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, we go to Commissioner's Report. Let's begin with Commissioner Mitchell?
Nothing to report.
All right, thank you. Commissioner McKay?
Yes, I did attend the civilian military community council meeting last week, and the CEO was present, and he mentioned that we're going to have approximately six L-35s come in, Cherry Point, and we should approximately hire close to 50,000 more jobs with our project. Also, they also mentioned that Cherry Point have a lot of land, a lot of land left over, and they are thinking about expanding more buildings on our property in the base. And I know Jacksonville don't have that much land, but when they tear down something, they have to rebuild it, so it is putting land there. I also, my heart goes out to the, off to the police officer that was lost a life in Raleigh and four other people there. And it's a sad thing that people got guns, going shooting people for no reason, all over the United States. So we need to heave and talk to our legislation that we need to crack down on this gun violence in our community and to, and to the state in this area. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, it's time.
Thank you. Commissioner Liner?
Sure, I have a number of things. First of all, I think a number of us on the board know Lee K. Allen. He's in the hospital and not doing good.
He is.
So he's been there for a couple of days, and I know of maybe a bit, a little bit longer. He is, has visitations, short period, but he's not awake most of the time. So he's not, he's not doing good. Secondly, I'd like to thank everybody on the board for moving this Charter of Freedom. I think it's a great initiative for the county, and I think it's, it'd be well served for everybody on that. Jack talked about the VA. We had a good team, good discussion for about three and a half hours last Thursday. The Director of the VA Health Center in Durham came down with three of her personnel. We went to the Health Center here in New Bern, went to the Health Center down in Havelock. What they seen, they liked. They're not sure that the Atlas program is the right fit, but they have programs that they think that they've got that will fit. They're going back to work the numbers. They were impressed, like Jack had said, they were impressed of what we've got, what we got available. They're looking, I think, Jack, I got the feeling, they looking to see how they could tie some of this into what they're actually doing, and maybe VA paying for some of this out of our HQHC, especially once we get the pharmacy going. And I think it'd be more people involved and everything else. Right now, we're about 35% underserved for our veterans population that's not even signed up for the VA. So we're only running about 64% down here, so there's about 35, 36% out there still available that we've got to reach and get into the system. But they were impressed. It's now, they're going to be setting up meetings with Jack and the staff to have Zoom calls and start moving this forward and, and moving out, but it's looking pretty good. They were impressed. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Liner. Commissioner Smith?
I have nothing new, however, I would like to recap that the reevaluation meeting for my district is tonight, and I would encourage citizens in District Three to attempt to attend the reevaluation meeting tonight at the courthouse, room four, courtroom four, 6 o'clock.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Vice Chair Booker?
Yeah, just one very quick message, and that is Thursday begins early voting, and I was advised recently that we will probably, in an off year, which means there's no presidential election, we'll probably get less than 50% of the registered voters to vote, which is just a shame. So I would encourage you to encourage everyone you know to get out and get vote. There's no reason with two weeks of early voting and then Election Day on November 8th. So no reason not to get out and vote. Plenty, there's plenty of time, too much time.
Got one thing, quick. I felt to mention that in the meeting on base the other day, we do have a type of the building going to be under construction, and also buildings coming soon on base. So if I have one of these, I've got something for all the commissioners.
Thank you, we appreciate that. All right, commissioners, anything else to bring forward? We do have a request for closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-31811A3, attorney-client privilege. Anything else to add on that? Do I have a motion that?
Don't move.
I have a motion and a second, if we go in closed session. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We will, give us about five minutes, and we'll go in closed session.